We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome, visitors. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Trustee major, would you like to read the Board of Trustees' mission statement?
The LJSD Board of Trustees is an elected body of community members committed to serving with honesty and integrity, nurturing a relationship of trust. We hear the voice of our constituents and represent the values of our district. We provide oversight of taxpayer funds through fiscal accountability. We uphold advancing policy for the purpose of forging an academic consensus. We create and empower well-rounded citizens while respecting parental authority. We promote individualism, nurture talents, encourage passions, and provide opportunities within the LJSD community.
Thank you. Trustee Arians, would you mind reading the district mission statement?
Sure. L. J. School District's daily mission is to maximize student learning and ensure every student's growth academically, socially, emotionally, individually, every day in all departments.
Thank you. Now entertain a motion regarding tonight's agenda.
I'll move to approve tonight's agenda as noted, published.
I'll second that.
Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Okay, before we get started for tonight's meeting, I'd like to make a few announcements. I'd like to remind everyone, these board meetings are our business meetings held in public and not public board meetings. The board is governed by Idaho Code Title 33, Chapter 5, and follows our district policies. The time for public input is provided for the public to express themselves to the board. It is not a time to engage with the board, nor is it a time for questions and answers. The board, in its discretion, may ask clarifying questions to ensure it understands the input provided. However, no discussion or conversations take place. All contract renewals and non-renewals are presented to the board for consideration by the superintendent. Our decisions are based on the evidences provided and the recommendations made. At the August 12th board meeting, during patron input, a patron stated that during the July 8th board meeting, I stated that on advice of council, trustees will no longer be responding in writing to patrons' questions and comments. I did not make this statement. The statement I made was a follow-up to the June 24th board meeting, confirming the board's legal counsel's recommendation that we do not respond in writing to group emails. Rather, we should be addressing group emails in an open meeting as to not violate open meeting law. I apologize if the discussion comments were misconstrued or unclear. That was not my intent. Finally, the superintendent remains under contract. Her contract is up for renewal in 2022. Next item on the agenda is public input. Do we have any public input? Okay. Moving on, we'll go up for action items. First item up for action is the consent agenda. I'd like to break these apart. First, we have the minutes of the previous meeting. Are there any discussions, conversations, questions, concerns on these? Anyone?
I didn't, I did not.
No.
Trustee first, ma'am?
Yes.
I brought those June 24th board meeting minutes back to you.
Yes.
For correction.
Right, I'm looking at those. And I'm trying to find, and maybe I have my dates wrong. What I'm looking for is the reference. Wasn't quite clear regarding the SROs. So it is in the, in the, I'm sorry, are we, did we move forward to these or are we doing it all together?
No, I broke them apart. I wanted to review the minutes.
Okay. So are we moving to the 24th now? The clerk has asked the question, or?
Right.
Okay.
Well, I did have comments on the 8:12 minutes. I'm a little concerned under the motion regarding staff presentations. Well, it's the report and presentation of agenda. There's a statement, you said Chairman Thompson asked for clarification on what should be done with SRR3 funds and whether it should be set aside for rainy days, for a rainy day. The way I recall that conversation is that CFO Wallace had stated that in applying for the SRR3 dollars, the purpose of that was to storehouse the money for, for a rainy day sort of thing. My reflection back to him was, why would we be storing up money that we cannot replenish? Why aren't we, like, you know, it just didn't make sense to me. So I don't want it to go on record that I brought that out. I was trying to get clarification from CFO Wallace.
So would it work for you, Chairman Thompson, if I go back to the video, listen to it, put those, the statement back in, or? So I'm looking for direction on.
That's right.
I can bring it back to the next meeting for a moment.
Sure.
But since we are recording.
Yes.
And posting, we have a full dialogue available to the public for as long as you guys choose to. So we could dial back those minutes and say, Mr. Wallace presented to the Board of Trustees, and the public can go to the video if they want to watch it entirely, or I can have big statements.
Well, I, I, I don't like it implying that I'm the one that's suggesting we store the funds for a rainy day because that was not my intention.
So I'll go back to the video like I said.
Okay, perfect.
Do you want me to bring it back to you for the September 9th?
Yes, that would be preferred. And I think that was my only question on those minutes. Yeah, that was it. So we can move on to the June 24th minutes.
So at the very top of page three, where we had the discussion with Dr. Meyer about the, the SROs, the previous SROs, and she said she had brought that forward, and the board did not approve for armed guards. But really, what was brought to the board was an option inside of the superintendent's presentation. So it wasn't like, when reading the notes, it just sounds like she came to the board and said, "We need these SROs," and the board said, "No," and that wasn't it. It was an option in a slideshow presentation, and that was the clarification that was being made. So however you need to fix it, I'm fine with that. That it wasn't that the superintendent brought it to the board and the board said, "No," it was just in a slideshow presentation that this was an option, I suppose. That was the answer that I received.
I will go back to the video on both of those, just to make sure.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
And I also don't know, in recalling that board meeting, if when Dr. made that type of a statement, if she was referring to the previous board that she brought the four armed guards to because I don't recall four armed guards being brought to this board for approval.
I think it states, it states that she spoke to previously asking the Board of Trustees, so I think you can probably.
It may be. Right, but that's not how it's written. So I just want that to be clear. All right, that being said, I'll entertain a motion regarding the minutes of the previous meetings.
I would move that we approve the corrections as noted to the previous meeting minutes and the approval of the submission.
I'll second that.
Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the HR items. Is there any questions, comments, conversations to be had about what's being presented?
Not for me.
Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion regarding the HR items.
I'll make a motion to approve the HR items as presented.
Second motion.
Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to report and presentation agenda, we have staff reports, the first report by the superintendent.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Okay, so we're going to talk about the draft operational plan. I sent you the update with the staff input and parent input today. So you can link them there if you want to see it. It's also available in the next slide. This is just in reference to, let's say, in-person, returning to in-person. So I put the checklist in there. So these are, I further revised this. We've been getting a lot of parents asking, "What are we starting in?" So I'm asking the board tonight because our initial review, input, more review, and then the final board was not going to be until 9:23. So I've put in, you could approve it 9:09 or 9:23. It's required by October 5th. We're getting a lot of input. But what I really want tonight is for the board to approve us starting the school year at the green level of operation. I feel it would be important, I need to let the parents know what level of operation we're going to start in. And so I think the board approving, starting, what level of operation you would like our district to start in is going to be important.
The approval is not an action item. It would be more of us directing the superintendent how to begin the school year because it is not an action item on tonight's meeting.
So I would just like to clarify, in the blog that you write, you had mentioned that the board asked you to add a mid-range level of operation, which was orange.
Yes.
And that is not what I would ask for, so I just wanted to clarify. I was always wanting to open in green. I did not want to open in orange. I didn't want to open in yellow. I was always wanting to open in green. So I just wanted to clarify on that, that I never wanted to open in orange. I didn't want to open in yellow, as well as I never asked for an orange. I just asked for yellow.
Some other board members asked for an orange.
Well, either way, I never asked for an orange, and I just want to make sure I can't speak for anybody other than myself.
Right.
But I just wanted to clarify that because there was a little bit of a problem there that I had with that blog because I didn't, I didn't do that. So I just thought I would make sure to clarify that in, in this meeting. So, thank you.
Well, thank you for creating a yellow, which was what was asked by this board.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I greatly appreciate that. So does anyone have any conversation, concerns, whatnot, with directing the superintendent to open the school district in green?
No, I definitely want us to be in green.
Great. Anybody else?
Beginning to end, hopefully.
Forever and always.
But yes, I would like to.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
No, I think my opinion is that we could open in green as well.
Yeah.
100% in support of that.
Great.
What are other school districts doing? Cortlande and Post Falls, do they have the same green, yellow, red, whatever?
They're not, depending on the levels that I'm aware of. They're just not starting in masks and they're starting five days a week.
Yeah, that would be, my preference is that we don't go back to the mindset of red, green, yellow, blue, whatever color, because the whole point of this operational plan is simply to receive federal funding. With the federal funding comes restrictions. And we're going to be held to those restrictions. We don't have control over those restrictions. This is not mandated by the state. It's not mandated by anybody. And nobody else is doing these red, green, yellows. I don't know why Lakeland went here other than to get the federal funding. Is that correct, or?
No, I think the parents like to be able to look at a, in fact, one of the parents even said, "Let's look at what's in green. If it moves to a higher level and we move to yellow, what does that entail? What additional precautions are to be put in place? And then if it gets to what level would we eventually not have in-person?" I feel like the patrons and I feel like the parents really like having the different levels delineated. But I can certainly ask.
Yeah.
Some, some districts in the state are doing different levels. But some districts in the state have it by color, some have it by numbers, by letters. It's totally up to the school board. I think this just clearly outlines for parents, parents, and what precautions we'll add if you step along the line.
And I don't have any problem with that. I mean, we navigated all last year, right? We came up with the red, yellow, all that. I think my, I'm not in for taking the federal funds, which we cannot, watching the climate across the country. I cannot put my vote behind something I have no control of, and I cannot take the chance that I'm going to vote for something that may turn into a mask mandate, that may turn into a vaccine mandate, that may turn in because we took federal money. So therefore, I'm opposed to this SRR funds operational plan, but I definitely have no problem with, you know, giving the patrons a color-coded plan like we did last year. But as far as tying the district and our students and patrons and staff and everybody to something that is completely controlled by the federal government. And if we don't jump through their hoops and we do spend the money, we could be forced to give the money back, which we've seen that happen. So that's, that's my, that's my opinion on the, on the whole thing. I, I just can't do that, not, not watching everything else.
Well, we're not asking to do, to have a discussion today, but if that's, if that's the way that people on the board feel, we need to have a very transparent conversation with the public because we'd be giving them 5.8 million. We also not, plan not to go forward with plant facility levy, thinking that it's going to bridge it to help the taxpayers. We have bonds coming off in '23 and '24, 2023 and '24. And our staffing is dependent, as Mr. Wallace has presented, the CFO Wallace has presented. So we were, we were definitely assuming with our budgeting that that money's coming. So if the board is feeling differently, that's going to be a whole different conversation.
Yeah. So the SRR3 funds was to cover staffing too? I thought that was the 20% learning losses where we were.
20% of it is learning loss. And we also talked at the board meeting about plant facility levy, not running plant facility, which is 1.146 per year. So that would have to be a different conversation. If, if the board is looking at not taking 5.8 million dollars.
I don't know what the board wants to, I just felt like I had to put that out there. And I still have a, I don't understand the 20% learning loss. If we were open five days a week, how we had 20% learning loss last year? But that, like you said, that's another conversation because that would seem, you know, in my head that we would continue to have 20% learning loss if we're still open five days a week.
The 20%, just to clarify, the 20%, it just says that of our SRR3 funds, 20% of the budget must be used for programs that will address what we're calling unfinished learning instead of learning loss, but the federal government calls it learning loss. So there definitely has been some static and some gaps in learning in our students. Back from March of 2020, when all of a sudden the COVID hit, and we have people at home, there are some gaps in learning for our students.
Okay.
And then you have, over the summer, there's always a little bit of regression.
Sure.
And we come back. But we're in COVID in the fall of 2020. And as you know, we started with the airplane in flight. And the board voted to start in yellow the Friday before we started school the very next Tuesday. So we definitely, and again, there's been a lot of public gratitude to the board for keeping our kids. We're one of the very, very, very few districts in the entire state that kept our board, I mean, voted to keep us in session five days a week all year long.
Right.
So I don't believe that our gaps are going to be as big as some folks who have been in and out of school. But we do, the 20% is not saying we have 20% learning loss. It's saying 20% of the budget of that needs to go towards addressing unfinished learning, learning loss. You know, John Brown Elementary had the Jump Start program. We have after-school programs for our secondary folks that are starting this fall to address students that have these gaps. And we're going to do it individually, look at kids. That, those funds are targeted towards helping kids to fill in those gaps and get our learning back up to speed.
Yeah.
Great. Okay.
So at the, the, our school is starting next week. Staff comes back. My feeling was, and I've said this over and over again, I, I'm trying not to assume what the board's thinking, but knowing how you all voted, well, we weren't here yet, but voted to start last year in yellow, but you were five days a week, no mask mandate, that was optional. So my feeling was, and knowing how we made it through the whole year, and our positivity rate was equal to surrounding districts that were in and out of school and had masks mandates. So my feeling when we put this together, just so my thinking is clear, and you can clarify and change it if you want, but the reason that I did a green and a red was like, it doesn't even have to be colors. It could be, we're in, or we're out. Our special plan to you was. Our board has proven and our patrons have proven, and I know it's not 100%, but the majority of our parents are like, "Pull up our bootstraps. If you're sick, stay home." We've proved that without this other external control, we've stayed in and we've been successful in our district. So my thought was, let's be in school. Unless the governor, and the initial plan said, unless the governor says, "I'm putting an executive order, it's stay at home." So that's what I came to the board with thinking. Again, I'm not trying to assume I understand your thinking, but I thought, "We've been successful for a year for this." This is what I think that the board would probably go with. At that board meeting then, several board members said, "I want a mid-range. I want something in the middle." I was explaining, "We cannot go to yellow." I've had several patron calls. "We cannot go to yellow in the way yellow was before." Yellow before was having everyone's prep was at the end of the day so that we could spread the kids farther out. There was no specials, and there was more teachers, more teachers with students so that it was smaller class sizes. So the day was shorter, and we could do that. You can't do that without a lot of work ahead of time. So the colors don't really matter, but we can't go to that. So then we had talked about, okay, well, something like the orange. Well, nobody on the board ended up liking the alternate days. Nobody liked that. So Board Chair Thompson and I had a discussion. Really, what she was looking for was something that was scaled back from the green. Like, if we're not completely in, what are additional precautions we can put on before we just all of a sudden get to red? So that's why this next step has in these, this yellow, which is not the same as last year's yellow. But she said the green's not the same as last year. Yellow's not the same as last year. The red is the same as if the governor. So I'm happy to do whatever the board likes. It would just be great if you guys talk about it and then could direct me to go whichever way you'd like so that I can send that up to parents and they know what the plan is to start the year.
Well, I think that we should be directing the superintendent to open the school five days a week. Green, go, no mask. Just, let's get back to the normalcy that everyone is familiar with, with regard to education.
That is my opinion as well.
I don't have a problem with the colors. The patrons know it from last year. I wish that I could say we're completely out of the woods, but my opinion is that we're not.
Right.
So, you know, gives the parents an idea based on their experiences last year.
Right.
And hope that this completely, we completely get it behind us.
Right.
And we don't have colors, but.
We just start school.
But I think it helps the parents to understand, you know. And then I say, definitely, I like, I like the green.
Yeah.
But, but they'll understand what green.
Right.
What makes a green.
They just go, yeah. Okay, so do you understand that we would like you to open the school as open as you can? Sending the kids back to school, no masks, five days a week, full operation for education?
Perfect. So what I hear is that we're going to start in green. Okay, then the board said, gave me permission to have an operational plan subcommittee. I sent out the applications that the board requested. We have 15-plus volunteers. The reason I say plus is as of Tuesday, when the board agenda needs to be uploaded, we have 15. These add up to more than 15. The reason they add up to more than 15 is because it's parent representation. So meaning some, some parents maybe are a Garwood. They also have a student Lakeland High School, so I put them under. So you can see where parents are represented. We're still working on one for Mountain View. But then the total number of parents that this is, is 15. Then, within the last two days, since the board agenda has been uploaded, I have got three more parents that have come in, one for 20, two for 12. So what I would like to do is have permission to either refer with 15 that we're here by Tuesday, or to add the additional three. I haven't gotten back to the additional three. And move forward and bring the group together to review and give input to the board. And then they would be the ones that would review the plan every six months until September of 2023, as required.
Just drop the payment.
Oh, okay.
Can I just leave on timer? Was there a deadline?
No, I just sent it out and they put it in there. So there was no deadline, but just, I just want you to know why this has changed from what you have in the board book.
So this, I'm not remembering this committee here. So this is to talk about our operational plan and get the, okay, I just thought we were going to do a, like a survey sort of thing, but this is parents representing. Okay.
So at the last board meeting, I asked permission to get a subcommittee. And so we did a parent survey. So you can get input into the first initial when we have the levels. And then that's what I've been sending you, the parent, the actual comments and the survey. But then we're required by the state that we need to have a meaningful stakeholder input. So I asked the board if we could have a subcommittee of the board so that we could have parents from each school represented, and you gave permission for that to happen. So these are the parents that have signed up so far. And I'm happy to just cut it off right now at 18. I feel like that's enough, or I can.
Yes, no.
I was participating, not meeting via phone, so.
That's.
I kept losing connection.
So the state's requiring us to have a.
The federal government is requiring, and the state is the facilitator of the SRR3 funds. The operational plan is part of the requirement for the federal funds. So now you're creating a committee of 18 parents of 4,200 students, or 44, 46, pick a number, to move and bring to the board the voice of what happens. This is, I don't have a problem with the parents being involved, create 10 subcommittees. I have a problem with the board being governed by the federal government and the state moving through this pandemic if you watch what's happening in the rest of the country. This is a mandate in order, back to the operational plan that we're talking about, this is part of that mandate. The mandate to receive the funds requires that you not only have the subcommittee, but a few other things. They meet every so often, the plan, sort of like what we did last, last year, right? We did this all on our own, we were good stewards of those things. But now we're going to have the federal government and the state government control us via the money by these things and who knows what else. That's my problem with the whole thing. Is being tied to that control, the federal government and the state.
That's a valid concern.
I don't think we'll ever get away from some sort of control. We get money from the state and we have requirements that we have to meet to get that money. It's no different on the federal level. I mean, there's, we have requirements, we've always had requirements, we'll probably always have requirements. It's difficult to fund the school district and the levels of staffing and teachers, you know, without every opportunity that we can.
Right, I just want the board to be aware of what they're doing. I just, that's all I'm saying.
Well, we do receive federal one, we do receive federal dollars currently, as you know.
Right.
Title one funds and it has strings attached. We have title two funds, we have title four funds, we have title five funds, we have part B funds, students with disability. So we do have federal funds that the district does have and it does have, we were required to do a CFSJA consolidated federal grant every year, that has strings attached to it. I'm not, the board, it's up to the board. I feel like having parental input is a good thing. The operational plan is a significant, meaningful stakeholder input. So the surveys in some districts, all they're doing is a survey and they're not having a parent subcommittee. The board can certainly say, we just want the survey results, we don't need a subcommittee and put this on pause, that's fine. It's up to the board.
I think getting more parents involved within this district is crucial to the vitality of the district. So if we've got fifteen or eighteen parents that want to step up and offer input, I say yes.
Right, absolutely.
Because that's the only way our culture grows.
I agree with you. And so I would like us to bring these parents, these eighteen parents together. And again, it's a subcommittee of the board, so I'm bringing it to the board to make sure that you're in agreement that we bring these eighteen parents together, they can review the current plan. And then we can bring back input before the nine nine board meeting.
And just so the board understands also with the, speaking to trustee Irons' comment and the superintendent's comment, I'm well aware of the federal funding, but no other federal funding that the district receives is solely controlled by the COVID pandemic, and this is. I'm not opposed to parents being involved, my God, I wish they more would show up. We have all kinds of committees they could sit on.
Oh, yeah.
Or getting input or anybody speaking forward or having a plan for people, we did that last year. That's not my opposition. My opposition is purely receiving funds controlled by a pandemic in which the federal government owns.
Oh, okay, you changed your slide because the slide in here is different. Okay, I'm looking at it going, not a worry. Okay, so based on that and the fact that we are excited that eighteen parents would like to become involved, what more do you need from us?
I'm just wanting some consensus so that all the boards in agreement with me.
All right, does anyone, is anyone opposed to the parent subcommittee of eighteen people getting involved?
No.
Ramona, are you opposed to the subcommittee?
I'm not opposed to parents getting involved, but I am opposed to this, no, I'm opposed to this operational plan that's being from the federal government. Yeah, I am opposed to that. I'll never be opposed to parents being more involved ever.
Okay. That being said, I would like for you to move forward with the subcommittee. Or actually, I'd like to prefer to call it parent involvement. So, sorry, go ahead.
We had a parent inquiry regarding parental consent for vaccinations. So I did a little research and I'm just requesting that the board policy subcommittee review our policy on vaccinations and ensure that we require parental permission. I know there is the exemption that parents can sign up for in our state. But there was a question about it and I just want to ask publicly if we can add this to the policy subcommittee. There is pending litigation in Washington DC and they've, that there's vaccinations able to happen for students without parental authority. I know it is in your mission statement and I assured the patron that I do not believe this board would ever move forward with allowing vaccinations without parental authority. But it brought up a good question. There is, it has happened in this country. And I feel like it's in your mission statement. And so I'm just asking if we could maybe go back to that and make sure that parents in this community know that the two issues that they're going to be talking about, Washington DC, the litigators are talking about parental rights and religious freedom. So with exemptions, so I just wanted to make that request of the policy subcommittee. We did have a pub, a patron comment alleged stolen equipment from one of our schools. And Porters asked that I respond. I shared with the board prior, but she would like to be shared in public since the comment was made publicly, so I'm going to read a statement from an employee. The patron approached, a patron approached a staff person about putting an elliptical in a weight room sometime in two thousand seventeen, eighteen. The patron was told that we didn't have space in there for space and logistical reasons. The patron continued a couple more times, asking if there was a space for it. They didn't want it in other places in the school or in, they wanted to know if it could please go in the corner of the weight room. There was back and forth between the patron and the employee. They asked, if I don't want this in the weight room, can I put it in my basement? And the patron said yes. He vaguely remembers joking the patron about, oh, what would my wife say if it showed up in the basement? Knowing that it could be removed at any point, he thought he would give it a chance and squeeze it into the corner of the weight room. The elliptical machine sat in the weight room for over a year. And pretty much as expected, it was rarely used and it was something to the distraction of class flow. Ultimately, the lack of use and distraction was not why it was moved. We added additional stations to the weight room and space was too valuable, so it had to go. They went from eleven to thirteen stations in the weight room and there was no space for the elliptical machine. After some time passed, this staff person heard that the patron was accusing me of stealing the elliptical and that it was a public comment at a board meeting. When confronted with the principal in presence, said, I did not steal it, you gave me permission. The patron said, yes, he agreed to that and it was, it was. Proceeded forward in the situation involved. Then almost recently, after the public comment, the staff person heard that it was set in that allegedly something was stolen. So they had turned, returned it to the school because they didn't want to have that accusation any longer. I never would have taken something like that if it was a school item, if it was not a school, it should never have been allowed in the weight room. They're confused by this and there's no official donation or anything. So that's the response by the staff person.
Thank you.
The engagement surveys were questioned by one of the board members at prior board meeting. And they should now be, some of the links are broken and there's other reports that have been linked in. So we're, we've double checked it, we think it should be on each school's website under our school tab now. So that should be updated. I do want to give a public acknowledgement to Mountain View High School. Mountain View High School is our alternative school. And they were the highest student engagement in the entire state for any secondary schools, second, sixth, and twelfth. So kudos to Mountain View for this student engagement.
Yeah, good job, Sam.
You're welcome. Moving on to action items. The board can take action to approve, deny, amend, modify, or postpone action on any of the items listed below. First item for up for action is the agriculture, sales, and entrepreneurship course proposal. I'll entertain a motion regarding this.
I'll make a motion to approve the agricultural sales and entrepreneurship course proposal.
I have a second to that motion.
Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to board policy four one seven five, required annual notices. I'll entertain a motion, first read was last week. I'll entertain a motion regarding the policy.
I move to approve board policy number four one seven five, community relations.
Four one seven five is required annual notices. It's, it goes under community relations, but it's titled required annual notices.
Required annual notices.
Does anyone have any comments, conversations they'd like to have on this policy? I did forget to ask that about the course proposal.
No.
Okay. So we have a motion.
I'll second that.
Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Being presented with four job descriptions. Now, I did speak with Dr. Meyer regarding the high school activities director slash assistant principal. And some modifications, corrections were made. I would like to point out to the board that I added in blue all the things that are actually on the assistant principal's job description that were not included on this job description. What I proposed to Dr. Meyer is, I don't, I don't have a problem with staff wearing two hats. What I have a problem with is trying to combine multiple jobs into one person that's currently in that position. So I personally believe we should remove the assistant principal responsibilities. We should have a job description for the high school activities director. And then when that person assumes that role, their supervisor can say, you are the athletics or activities director and the assistant principal and give them both job descriptions. So that they understand their duties are quite extensive. Because there is some duplicity on these job descriptions. Because we have records in finance, but then we come down and then we've got financial and office management. So I personally would like to take the assistant principal position off of this job description because we have a job description for an assistant principal and make this specifically just a high school activities director. I don't know what anyone else's thoughts or opinions are on that.
No, I actually have the same thoughts with us.
Okay.
Agree with that.
Okay. Anyone else? Did you follow me, Rob?
I did. And it kind of goes along the same lines with.
The federal programs director.
Yes.
Yes, exactly. Because as our district grows, which it is growing, at some point in time, we may only have an athletic, an activities director. So when those responsibilities are tied in, how do you break them off unless you rewrite the job description again?
That's true.
So that, that's just, I mean, just trying to be a little bit more effective instead of constantly having to revisit and change this. But I, going on the record, I'm not opposed to the activities director being titled with the vice prince, assistant principal position as well. I just want two separate job descriptions.
Well, that doesn't necessarily specify or doesn't have to specify that the activities director is a full-time position either.
Correct.
So.
Correct.
It's a job description.
It is.
These are the roles, one person may have both.
Right.
Yep.
Right, exactly.
And then, like you said, at some point in time, you know, with that, eight thousand students.
Right. If, yeah, I don't want to go there, but yes, as we blossom.
Let's not grow that.
Let's not grow that big. Okay, so that being said, does anyone have any other input regarding the draft proposal for the high school activities director?
Yeah.
One of the things I was confused about, not, I mean, I was thinking in terms of high school. But number thirteen, it's, there's an assistant supervision of the cafeteria during lunch hours, which makes sense. And assist with playground supervision on the side.
Well, that is what is on the high school assistant principal's job description. You know, I thought that as well, but I just took it verbatim off of what is currently on the website. Because I didn't want to be accused of monkeying around, so I just copied and put her over there and thought, let's have a conversation. But you never know, maybe the high school students go on the playground to play. Usually they sit in the bleachers, but you know, who knows?
Maybe just.
Or just school grounds. Cafeteria and school grounds.
Took it for what it was.
School grounds. I think that's great, we could say school grounds.
Perfect. Yeah?
Yep.
Yes.
Other than that, no.
Okay. Trustee Grace, any comment? Okay, is there any discussion regarding the assistant superintendent for secondary education description, job description, or the assistant superintendent for elementary education job description?
I don't have a question about the job description itself. Am I going to be asked shortly to approve these?
Job descriptions?
Job descriptions?
Yes, they are an action item for the approval of the four job descriptions.
And then once I, once these are approved, then this job is put forth and put out there for people to apply for, correct? That's applied, that, me approving this, I just, I just want to clarify, me approving this is also approving that position as well.
Not that I'm aware of, no, it's just approving the job description.
Okay, all right, so if, if, if a job is going to be brought up, that job has to be approved as well. So me approving this job description is not approving the actual job. Like that we're going to go and seek some employment, somebody for this employment position.
Because I'm not, we're just approving the job descriptions.
Okay, all right.
That's all we're doing.
Great.
Does anyone have any questions or comments about the federal programs director job description? Which thank you very much for making it specific. I appreciate that. Okay, so if that ends the discussion with respect to these job descriptions, I will entertain a motion regarding the job descriptions.
I guess I would move to approve the job descriptions. I guess dropping the high school principal off with the activities director.
Okay.
And all the others. And the, the change, the playground.
Okay. Okay, that, the change of the language for the playground is on the high school assistant principal. So if we could have that brought next board meeting for approval, the assistant high, or the high school assistant principal job description, so that we can make sure we've gotten that clear and we can approve it at that time. Okay.
And I will second that motion, assuming that me approving this job description does not approve the job itself. And I will second that motion, assuming that me approving this job description does not approve the job itself. Trying to acquire a person to fill this position.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the student handbooks. Go ahead.
We need, on the federal programs director, we do not really have one, so I do need to move forward and post that position. And we had talked about whether the board wants it to be in district only or in and out of district, but I need to move forward with that.
Oh, okay.
So do we amend the agenda or how, what?
Well, typically, the board doesn't approve at board meetings, whether I open, but to your point, the board wants to have a say in it. So we need to have that discussion and then the board can tell me, direct me what to do. But I need to have the federal programs director and we're coming back to school next week, so.
Well, I would suggest that you then, you know, put it out that we need a federal programs director. Whether that's in district or out of dress, district, I believe, would be your call. You would just need to bring the candidate, the candidate information, your recommendation, whatnot before us, before they're hired. Does anybody else have any input on that?
Why are we having to bring, is that something that we are supposed to approve?
If it's an administrative contract, it's my understanding, under statute, we approve those.
Okay.
Is that not correct?
I'm just wanting to do it how the board wants it to happen, so from understanding, the job descriptions are now, are now I would post in or out of district, whatever my choice is for the federal programs director. Then when we get the applications, I would ask if any board members want to sit on the interview, because it's a district level position. And then we would go through interviews and then the board would want to see the packets. If they didn't participate in the board, then would be approving the hire with that at the next agenda. Is that correct?
Well, I would think the board would want to see the packets regardless if they're on the committee or not.
I meant like they'd see, if they're on the committee, they would have already reviewed them.
Oh, okay.
That's what I meant by that.
Well, I, I I have a little bit of an issue with one of the, the jobs that is being proposed for the job description. The secondary, the elementary education assistant superintendent. I, I guess that if that's going to be brought forth as a, as an offering for a job opening, I guess I have an issue with that. I feel very concerned with the fact that we would have nearly a half a million dollars wrapped up in assistant superintendents and assistants, as well as secretaries and all of that. And I just am really concerned about that. So before that job comes forth, opening to fill that position, I guess that's why I was stating that I'd like to have that, that brought, brought forth. So before that happens, I'd like to have a discussion about that.
All right.
Well, we certainly need to get a federal programs director.
Correct.
So I think the superintendent should probably move ahead with getting that process underway, because
I would agree.
We don't have much time.
Right, I would agree. Yeah, we would just approve the hiring when you bring your recommendation to us for approval, to hire the person. Which if you need to hire someone before the start of school and you have someone that has, you recommend, that you're recommending for the position and we need to hold a special board meeting to approve that, then please just let me know and we can get that calendared so that we can hold a special meeting to approve the person for the position. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments?
No, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to student handbooks. I would like to say I really like that Timberlake and Lakeland went back to their unique individuality. I would like to state, though, that everyone, with the exception of Timberlake Middle School, put in the the 4175 with the corrections needed to be taken. Okay, yeah, so if we could just make sure we, we give everyone a clean copy. Because Timberlake Middle School actually took the red out and corrected it, but they put and/or, which wasn't part of the policy that was approved. It's just or. So if we could clean that up for them and just send it out, make sure it gets in the books. The only not concern, I'm just curious why, and Dr. Meyer, I don't know if you'll know the answer, but Mountain View doesn't cite any of our policies. Is, is there a reason why? Okay.
I have one little, one little thing. All of the elementary school and high school handbooks have the board meeting dates, day and time incorrect. They're actually following the website, which I discovered today is also wrong, so if we could get that corrected. It says to the second Tuesday of the month at six o'clock. Right on the, yep, right on the board's website. And also the Twin Lakes Elementary has the incorrect district mission statement and actual board terms. It says, it talks about a three-year term for the board members. It's actually a four-year, everybody else has that part correct. It just, Twin Lakes Elementary has that one wrong and they have the, I, what I assume to be the old district mission statement, so if they could correct that.
And Chairman Thompson, I, I have some clarification on Mountain View. So I think that very last page there, this 4175, the required annual notices. But I think what you're asking is why, like on most of the handbooks, they don't go through some other policies in it?
Well, what we had, what I had brought up last year when these were brought is that, you know, they're referencing policy. They should actually cite the policy number so parents can actually go look at it. Because I noticed in the high school, some of the policies were actually written out, some of them weren't, which I don't care which way the school leans.
So they reference policy, they're just
They're just not, I did, yeah, they're not giving, you know, policy, whatever, like all of the other books are doing, yeah. But I do think that the, the work put into these by all the staff is great and I appreciate it.
They were so much better. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all the changes in there. I do look forward to seeing one for the Reach Academy.
Oh, yeah, we haven't approved that. And I was curious, the base handbook. Was that not the same one that was listed, that was sitting out there, that was being hand out, handed out? Because when I glanced through the one that was
You didn't want it as a parent.
It was a parent one? Okay.
That's the same, just what was, it had, so when you told me about referencing policy and procedures, there was a header that said policy and procedure.
Okay.
But it wasn't in regard to Lakeland's policy. It was like due date for payments and behaviors and just parents had an initial next to each of those.
Well, because I recall seeing policy number and so that's why I, I should have just grabbed one so that I had it.
I did see that, so, yeah, I don't know.
Not a worry. Okay. So is there any more discussion regarding the student handbooks?
Yes, so the base handbook on page three states that due to childcare licensing requirements, that a valid copy of the immunization record has to be on file. That's not all the way true. They have to either have the immunization record or a exemption form. And then also under masks, it says Lakeland School District Guidelines and State mandates will be followed.
Oh.
That's not true either. The state can't assert the authority of the district, so that needs to be taken out. Lakeland School District Guidelines is fine. So we need to add language that it's either the record and/or an exemption form has to be on file according to the Department of Health and Welfare's website and statute. And then the masks, of course, would be controlled by the district. So just those two in addition there and then a striking of the state and then I think we're good. That's all that's really important, because I, I had as far as the base.
Okay. All right, then I will entertain a motion regarding the 2021, 2022 student handbooks.
I would move to approve the handbooks as presented with, but with the corrections that we've discussed.
Okay. Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next on the item agenda for action is the State of Idaho Special Education Manual. I was informed during the agenda planning meeting that this needed to come before us for approval. I don't recall approving it last year, but I'm, I'm, I don't know much about this and we can't make any changes to it. So I'm not really sure why we have to approve it. Dr. Meyer, can you speak to that? Do you know?
I don't think it came to the board last year, I don't, I think they put it on pause for one year because of the COVID. In my prior district, we always brought the manual and the board always approved it. Chrissy did look and stayed long, can't find it. But the State Department of Education, Students with Disability Department, did send it out and said, take this to your board and have them approve it. I'm, I'm not necessarily sure where that is required because we couldn't find that. So it's up to the board whether they want to prove it or not, or whether they want to just say that they've read it or that they acknowledge that we have a new manual sent for students with disability.
Well, I would like to point out that on page two, it says that this manual is being offered for adoption. So I don't know why we would need to approve it. I'm wondering if this is like the Cootie County Improvement Plan that we, we needed to, to adopt. Yeah, we, we didn't. Our action items on it didn't carry weight. So that being said, I, I don't understand why we need to take action on this to approve something that we, we have no control in, in its information.
I move to table this until we have more information.
I'll second that.
All right, hearing a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to discussion items, we have the 21, 22 Operational Plan for Discussion. We did discuss this during the superintendent's report. Is there further discussion that we need to have on this operational plan?
I think we might want to consider rewording the social emotional bit of it after our discussion about critical race theory. I know that sometimes that is a incognito word for CRT, just something to think about.
Okay.
And then that's the federal language of the plan. That's exactly how it's written.
Gotcha.
That, that's the purpose of the fund. If you read all of the SO3 documentation and all of the updates from the current administration. I have no discussion on it.
That was my input.
Okay. Just again, okay. Just here, it's, okay, I don't either. All right, next item up for discussion is the continuous, continuous improvement plan. We were provided with the metrics and the staff performance report. It's my understanding that we need to prepare the continuous improvement plan, often referenced as the SIP. Thank you.
The, as I shared, I think it was at the last meeting when we did a quick update on where we were with the SIP. I did share that we put in some ideas for the district level, district approved metrics based on our work this year. Obviously, those are just suggestions for the board. And if there's something else you'd rather see in there, that that's, that's the part where we get to have some local control over what metrics we're going to monitor.
Okay.
All of the rest of the metrics pages, those are all required within that report. And then new to the statute, that's the continuous improvement planning statute this year is the requirement for the staff performance report. What is interesting and important for the board to understand is that we have two statutes that kind of are at play against each other. And the legislators didn't really realize that that was going to be the case when they wrote the law. So we have one statute in 33515 or 12, one of those that are about evaluation which headquarter's staff are looking at. It says right in the law that teachers, when they're writing their SMART goals for student achievement, can choose from this list of, it's about nine, different types of assessments. And, and they have complete latitude according to the statute to decide what they want to use. This requirement for us, the staff performance report says that we have to, the intent behind it is that there are some issues with ISATs, especially in math, across the state. And the legislators really want districts to be able to put forth the things that they're proud of and, and knowing that every district uses different assessment tools and different programs. And so this is really an intent for us to kind of tell our story. But what is challenging right now is that the law says that we have to report on all staff, but you can only report if you have an N of five. And which means that five teachers used exactly the same assessment. So then you could report what percentage of kids met the goal for that assessment. So at the elementary level, that was easier because the majority of our teachers either use eye ready or eye station. So I was able to, to pull, Dr. Pasley and I, we sat down together with Chrissy and we pulled all of that information and we were able to put that information in the staff performance report. We cannot do that with secondary because they, they all use something different because the law says that they can't. So I was instructed by the State Department of Education to put in the notes section that the reason there is not secondary data there is because we didn't have an N of five because of, and I quoted the, I highlighted the statute. So I just wanted you to be aware of that and that's the reason that there is no secondary data.
I guess I'm a little confused. Are you talking on the staff performance report or the metrics?
The staff performance.
Okay, because under
At the bottom of the metrics page, there's an, I guess, a, yeah.
Yeah, there is a note there.
That goes into the, and she, that's where she, we were told to put that.
Okay, except on the staff performance report, you have K through five ELA, K through five math, K through five ELA. So I'm wondering, I guess I don't understand why the assessment tool being I-ready for K through five is not applicable. It says NA.
On the staff performance report?
Mm-hmm.
There's, there should be percentages in there.
Not under I-ready. Under I-station, it's eighty-three point nine percent. I-ready math is seventy-six point five percent.
I-ready ELA?
I-ready ELA.
And are you looking at the target or are you looking at the actual percentage?
I'm looking at the blue section eight, staff performance, previous year results and current year targets. Staff performance.
What's the result set that says?
Yeah, so the reason that the result, so the the reason there's, there's an NA in the 2020-21 results is that that's our metric for next year, but we didn't have a result this year because we didn't have five teachers use I-ready ELA because they either used the I-station for ELA because we had it for K-five also. Or they used the I-ready math. So there, there were, I, I couldn't report the results, but we wanted to have the performance metric in there because it can be used next year. We want to be moving into next school year, the district is not purchasing I-station for grades four and five. Because we're going to continue to use the I-ready grades K through five. So we wanted to make sure that that was in there as a, as a metric for moving forward.
Okay, so I guess I'm just a little confused because before this, you said it was that I-ready wasn't used at the secondary level because they can use whatever they want. But I thought I heard you say the teachers can use I-station or I-ready and then you, you distract the information from what they've used?
No, so all teachers get to choose what they want. We were only able to report for kindergarten through fifth grade because at those grade bands, the teachers chose to either use I-ready or a majority of them. That's not, that doesn't cover all teachers. We had kindergarten teachers who use district approved assessments. Like by the end of this year, my kids can count to one hundred and twenty. That's one of our assessments. Only, only two kindergarten teachers used that assessment. I couldn't report on that. So the only assessments where we had an N of five were K-five ELA, I-station and K-five ELA math.
Okay, so we did not have an N five for K through five ELA for I-ready?
Correct.
Okay.
And we didn't have an N of five for any assessment beyond fifth grade.
Okay.
Because they were, they're so content specific. And so we were asked to put the note in our report so that when the committee that will have legislators on and looking at these sees that, they'll be able to have a conversation during this next session about how to either marry this, the statute so that we can report on what we need to report on. Or recognize that this part isn't doing what they wanted it to do, so.
Okay.
So I, what, what I would recommend to the board is that we find some time where we can have a workshop where we can just all sit down together and really go through all of these pieces. I can answer any questions that you have as we go piece by piece through it, but definitely would like some time with the board for you to help guide us with regard to what, we put some ideas in there for the district level metrics, but I don't know if those match with, with what we want or if there's something else, so. Maybe we could have a conversation about them. We could maybe get something on the calendar.
Okay.
That would be, this, the SIP tool is required to be posted by October first.
Okay.
It can say draft on, but we have to have whatever we're working on posted by October first.
Okay. So it appears that we need to have a workshop with regard to the SIP plan. Input on availability for people?
What's the urgency of this?
By October first. So we need to do this in September. Because we're nearing the end of August. Oops. Oh. Yeah, that's right.
Maybe after Labor Day sometime?
Okay.
I see on the ninth, we have a review SIP tool at four. The ninth of September.
Oh, what is?
Built that into your board calendar just as a constant reminder that we'll do that at that board meeting.
Okay.
How much time do you think we would?
It's quite lengthy. I mean, there's the, the piece that Ms. Sexton's talking about, but there's a lot of stuff we have to put in the SIP plan in order to have it completely done.
Would Wednesday, September eighth be an option for people at 5:30?
Yes.
Right.
I can't do Wednesday night.
Okay. Not a problem. What about?
I mean, I could do. If it's not pushing the limits, I could do like Wednesday the 22nd.
Okay.
That's not too late. I know it's pushing it, but.
That would be the day prior to the board meeting. So we're going to try and look for it to have it.
Right.
Wouldn't it be on?
Would either?
You're right. It has to be before.
Right.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what about hitting the Tuesday or Thursday of that?
Yeah, I was gonna say, would a Monday, Tuesday or Thursday work for you? I just picked the Wednesday before the board meeting. There was no method to the madness. It was just there. Seventh is the first day of school. Let's yeah, let's, what about the thirteenth or fourteenth?
Yeah. Any, any, any of those days in the middle, I think that first week probably is not going to be good.
Okay.
So thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Okay.
I guess either of those days.
Any of those days?
And the thirteenth would be good for me.
Okay.
Which is a Monday.
Yes.
Okay, 5:30?
Okay.
Or it could be fifteen. So the thirteenth and the fifteenth, then good.
Let's go with Monday, the thirteenth.
What's my pen?
Thank you. Yes. Nine, thirteen, five, thirty, six. Okay. Oopsies. Any further discussion on the SIP?
No.
Excuse me, continuous improvement plan. Right, moving on to curriculum. We have, we're being presented with elementary supplemental resources for board consideration. We had a first read. Oh, this is our first read. Same with the supplement, secondary supplemental resources for board consideration. Is there any conversation to be had on the resources for elementary?
Well, on the social emotional learning elementary curriculum with digital print and SEL lessons, there's no way to look and see exactly what that content is. So I'm going to have a hard time approving something I can't see, especially with that tagline on it there.
Gotcha.
Would you like Dr. Pasley to address that?
Would we like to hear from Dr. Pasley on this? Yes, please.
So Mr. Massey, he's using it as, and is one of the specialist class. It's supposed to work in conjunction with second step, which is what our counselor uses. So it just kind of hits all the counseling kind of standards. But I can definitely see if there's a way that we can get a link or even purchase, purchase a part of it so we can get more insight into what the specifics are.
Or if he's using it, I'd be happy to go.
They haven't purchased it yet. I don't have it. So, and you know, there's a link, but I don't know that the link gives you as much information.
It says preview here, but when I click on preview, it asks me to sign in. So even if they have like a login or something, they could share with me so I could kind of look at the preview and kind of, kind of see what that is. It's just hard for me to approve something especially like that, but I can't.
And it works for me. So maybe it's just the right thing with Google. So I'll make sure I change that so you have access to it. If for some reason it's not working.
Okay.
But it works in conjunction with this, the counselor, the second step.
Thank you.
The core curriculum solution for middle school is on the elementary?
It's on the elementary.
Yes.
Yes.
I made Kelsey add that. I'm not sure why. It's, that's middle school.
Okay.
And that is specifically for the life skills program.
Oh, okay.
As is the N two Y, whatever that title was that was right below it.
What's right below it is little leveled reader statements or superset, little leveled reader superset.
So on the, on the
Secondary?
Secondary, you should see that.
Let's see here. Sorry, it just went away.
Looked at all of these books in the secondary. Some of the links didn't work, but I looked all the books up and I didn't, I didn't have an issue with them. There was a couple in there where they said they have a little content and that was questionable, but nothing that I have an issue with.
Is Learning Without Tears also for?
Best of the U D, yes.
Okay, I was just curious. Oh, music. Okay, cool.
Yay.
Yeah. Definitely. Okay, yeah, the core curriculum solution is also on the second, the secondary. Make sure we know it's there. Got it. Okay. The Polaris N two Y, is this a is this curriculum or is this a tool for IEPs? Just because it says the new IEP solution.
It's a, it's a tool for teachers.
Okay. Okay. Welcome. It's on the first elementary or secondary one, the middle one.
Where it says first.
And it's right below the core. Yeah.
So when I was working with Chrissy to figure out best to differentiate these, we went kind of with the format that you guys use for your policy reads. So that we could keep track. So the second read is the same list that I brought to you at the last board meeting and so if you have any questions about anything on that list or concerns, I'd have to answer those or hear those. And then my intent would be to bring that as an action item at the following.
Just curious, just because we've been discussing it in Policy Committee on the Kessler Science. On the structure of life, there is a sexual and asexual reproduction. Is that taught?
Through life science, yes.
Okay. 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 I have no other questions. Anybody else?
No.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, ladies. Oh, what the heck. Okay. God love this computer. Okay, moving on to the first reads for board policy. The first, first read is Policy 2340, Controversial Issues in Academic Freedom. This was a policy that brought before the board last meeting in discussion. It is about controversial issues in academic freedom. So it was the form that we're, because Chrissy did call me on this. Ramona, this is the policy that by statute, what the statute requires with respect to sex education being taught. Me and my creativity took language out that was actually in the statute, I think. And then you were like, yeah, but the statute only says ABC. And we're going through ABC, E, F, G, H, I, J, K. So are we wanting to take this back into Policy Committee? Or are you good with moving forward with how the policy has been revised in the committee?
I guess ultimately it would be if the board is.
Oh, yes. The board, sorry.
And I think that Ms. Sexton answered the questions I had last time because the statute's very explicit on how and what is taught.
Correct.
And then of course she shared the standards of what they have to address. And then she got to answer, I think it was during break or something about the other questions, but I, I think the policy as it is is fine right now.
Okay.
I don't think we've I, I think we took care of all of that in conjunction with what Dr. Meyer brought with the 2350 language also from that. I think they, it all-
Oh, the contagious and infectious disease. Okay, gotcha.
Snowballed one into the other and referencing each other and so that's, that's what I remembered from this one.
Okay, because we didn't, I, I didn't have Chrissy attach the 2340F because I wasn't quite sure where we stood on the language with respect to, you know, the statute saying something specific and we simplified it so that it was just clear.
Right.
So.
I'm fine with revisiting the form and bringing that back.
Okay.
I'm fine with that too.
Okay. All right, moving on to first read of 3520, Contagious and Infectious Disease. This was quite a little interesting policy that we previously had. It had not been updated in quite some time and the committee felt that, I mean, we took out language. Well, the green highlight on the policy was the actual language that was on our policy before. And it was very targeted. And so we took that language out. With respect to HIPAA and, and whatnot. Which actually- And so we took that language out with respect to HIPAA and whatnot, which actually happened to be language that I think Dr. Meyer wanted us to reconsider. So it was taken out because of what it was targeted for. And then we actually did go a little bit more in depth in adopting ISBA's pediculosis or head lice, boundaries, parameters, rules. So those were the changes, along with a few minor changes with language.
Yeah, because the other thing that was questioned was on what we could or couldn't report because of HIPAA and FERPA and all of those things. And that's where we, we visited the reportable diseases.
Right.
They're, they're found, they have to report these certain things, but that wasn't named
Right.
in there either.
And then we also took out the fact, it kept referencing either the school nurse or a design, or another responsible person designated by the board. And in respect to that, I mean, if it's the school nurse, the policy committee felt that it should be, or another designated school official. So putting that back down at the school level that they, they've got some control over this because the board isn't necessarily at the school every day to determine who that should be. So.
Nor should they.
Nor should they be. Agreed.
Although school board association knows the policy, it means that they should, statute says you're responsible for that person. But I agree with what you're saying.
Okay. So statute says that we're, that we are responsible for designating.
Designating the person, yes. And it also says.
A responsible person outside of the school nurse?
Yes, we're responsible for designating the person. That's why ISB put it in there, ISBA. We're also responsible for the forms and the submission of the forms and making sure that the forms are created. So, I mean, that's fine. We can, we can leave it out and the board can make the decision to have the school nurse. But that's why ISBA put it in there is because it is required, it is by statute a job of the board.
Okay.
That's where all the thing comes in with, you know, thinking the board is overreaching. But I mean, ISBA.
Yeah, I know.
The policy.
I, I, yes, they did.
And they wrote the policy based on the statute and IDAPA rule.
Right. And our previous policy did state, or other responsible person designated by the board. With that being said, I entertained some discussion by the board regarding this first read.
I'm, I'm fine with leaving it at the school level. I don't want to run down to the school and designate somebody or see if somebody has lice or licks.
Yeah.
Go to the doctor.
That's best left to the.
Yeah.
To the professionals at hand there.
And it just says that we designate. So at this point, we're designating.
Can we designate by saying appropriate school official? Is that designation enough as far as our?
Yes.
So that we're staying within our.
Right. Right. Which is what we said.
Required by.
Yeah, we could designate anybody. I mean, we can designate the janitor to do it. It just says that the board has to designate somebody.
And we can't just say a general appropriate school official?
Okay.
We can't just say appropriate school official?
Regarding my facial experience, regarding my facial, I, nothing against a school janitor. I would think this would have to be an administrative, like custodian, sorry.
Absolutely.
I think this would have to be up at the administrative level, like the school nurse, principal.
Yeah.
Assistant principal, or their designee from the nurse.
I think it's fine the way it's written.
Okay. Does anybody else have any qualms with the way it's written?
No.
Randy? Trusty Bain, sorry.
I just want to make sure that we're fulfilling our obligation to designate somebody if that is required by. If that is in fact our obligation to designate somebody, I don't think that we should.
Okay. Do we?
Does statute say designated or can it say identified?
Well, I guess we can.
This Idaho code.
I don't remember right, yeah, right where it was.
Okay.
I mean, if you're designating somebody, obviously the school nurse is in there. I think the school nurse should have the authority at her, his. You know.
Why don't we bring this back to policy committee and we can have that discussion? Because I, I do agree that we should be in compliance with the statute. However, I just, you know, all right, we'll, we'll get the language down. 4105 Patron Participation in Board Meetings, the proposed new. Previously, it's been called Patron Participation. Policy Committee is recommending we change it to Public Participation because constituents aren't necessarily all patrons of our district, however, they do support our district. So changing it to public would be more inclusive of everyone that is taxed and to support this district. So the policy was basically just revised to take out patron and put in public. And then we actually, there is a request to address the board form that is supposed to be being completed so that we have a little bit more information before the public speaks. We've not used that before in the past. So the policy committee thinks that it's in the district's best interest to have patrons complete the form because then it's a record, it's held. There's just, thank you, paper trail, with regard to patron comment. So those were the changes on that policy?
I, I would.
Go ahead.
I would agree with, with using a form, just so we have record of what maybe there, I don't know what's on, what would be included on that form, whether it's a topic that they choose to address or, or what. I don't want them screened.
Well.
Or the frugal, it's a request. You're, you're saying that you want to. We are not going to say yes or no. We are going to say yes, you can, you know, I just want to make sure that people understand that by submitting that form, it's not, we're going to either accept or deny that request. It's just you letting us know that you are going to.
The form is the very next item.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
No, 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 that's okay. I'm like, did we not include it?
That was a great point, yes.
Trusty Bain, that was a really great point.
And it does appear that a lot of what we've put on the sign in to speak before the board is, is on the form. So I mean, I don't think it's that we weren't really, we just didn't, here they've got a little bit more room that they can, what they'd like to address. And it will also help that if, I know in, it's that they have to speak to what's on the agenda, but if a patron has input that's not on the agenda, and we need to get it on the agenda so the patron can address the board, this is another way to allow that to occur so that patrons can, can have a conversation.
And they may have a topic that doesn't.
Correct.
And we don't have it on the agenda, or they don't know that it's not on the agenda yet because the agenda hasn't been posted.
Right.
Of when they submit the forms.
Right. So it's, I think it's a good tool.
That's really great.
Pre.
Right. And then if someone wants to speak disparagingly about an employee or something that we can, we can curtail that before it's actually out there.
Yeah.
Okay. So those are all the first reads. We have the resolution on the critical race theory. I don't know, doesn't appear that much input was provided. The clerk found this that's out there. When I had reviewed it, there was a lot of language that I really don't believe is specific for our district. And I do believe this should be fairly simple for our patrons to understand. It's not, we're doing everything in our power to not have this happen here, that we're not going to implement curriculum that supports critical race theory, that we're not going to be, that teachers are not going to be teaching critical race theory. We're not indoctrinating children, we're educating them. I mean, it just needs to be short, sweet, to the point. So we put it back on the discussion item to see if anyone had input to, to help it out.
I have input in it. We could definitely wean it down and just maybe reference the two statutes.
Okay.
That were passed.
Yeah.
I agree.
Simple and sweet. Oh, yeah. I read it, I'm like, no.
The point that, I think the point can be made.
Yeah.
What our position is.
Yes. Yes.
Giving definitions. Yes, I agree.
Okay. All right, moving on to the Lakeland High School equipment. I don't know why that's a discussion item.
You asked for discussion higher than February, the superintendent's more.
Oh, that's what that was about. Got it. Okay. Kootenai Classical Academy, they have come back for approval. Okay, this is what you're sending me. They did speak to our board last academic year. And so because they're coming, they, they didn't complete whatever they needed to complete last year, so they're coming back again this year. Is that correct, Dr. Meyer? No, they did complete it last year?
They came to explain, they've petitioned before.
Right.
If you have any questions, they are looking for.
But they withdrew their position, their petition, did they not, last year? And they're bringing it forward again this year?
They're asking for somebody to be their authorizer.
Oh.
And they have a spot now, which they need to have in post halls.
Okay. So who's being their authorizer?
Well, we're hoping that the state charter commission is their authorizer and that the board does not want to entertain the idea of being the Kootenai Classical Academy authorizer.
So are they asking us to be their authorizer? Okay.
Nope, I think we should definitely keep our hands up. It's not an action item, you just wanted to make.
Correct, it's discussion, aware that it was coming around.
For recommendation, but you wanted to just let the board know that they had sent this out again.
Correct.
And why would they turn to the school district to do that if they're in post halls?
Yeah, they, they would, people just, charter schools would love to have a local authorizer because you get under the umbrella, get free federal programs, get free services.
Right.
You know, also your audit becomes part of the audit of the district. There's several benefits for charter schools and there's no positives, as we've learned in this, from the history of this district, from authorizing a charter school.
Yeah. Have they approached post halls this year?
I'm sure they said, we think they probably say everybody.
They're required to by statute to per, to any district that they're within, or they may draw kids from, so I don't know.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay, next item is board member input for future agenda items. I met with a constituent and the constituent was a little concerned that our board does not seem to have a strategic plan, which encompasses the vision that we should be promoting for the district. This constituent basically feels that without the strategic plan, how are we navigating the district? The biggest concern further from this constituent was the growth that we are facing. What do we intend to do with it? How are we going to navigate it? What are our goals? What's the vision for the district? So the patron kept asking me this over and over and over. Now, I did explain to this patron that I've been on the board for a year and a half. And when I came on the board, I was never given a strategic plan that, that we were working with. So Rob, can, has the board previously ever had a strategic plan to govern the district with, to give the vision for the district down to the superintendent that you're aware of?
Not that we created in my scope.
Okay.
The range was.
Well, you know, we did have a long, long range facility plan for, for growth.
Right.
You know, the, I think what you're getting at more is the.
Vision.
Our.
A board strategic.
A board.
Versus a district.
Correct. Correct. And I know we have the continuous improvement plan, which is specific to the way I understand it, I could be totally wrong. Educational development and growth. But for our district, with what we are getting ready to endure with the growth and our schools, et cetera, this constituent would like this board to entertain creating a strategic plan that gives our vision for our district and that we could report to the patrons on as far as how we're doing and how we're attaining and how we're going after and how we're staying on target. So because I did meet with this constituent, I wanted to bring that out to everyone because I felt that his concerns were valid because we haven't spoken of, oh, yeah, that was supposed to be on the agenda as well. We haven't spoken to our constituents at all within this district about the growth. And Dr. Meyer, I did ask you to discuss and bring back to the board, we had the email from a constituent regarding our nonresponsiveness to planning and zoning, and you stated that was incorrect. So I asked you to bring that to the board and it's not on the agenda. I'm not sure how that got overlooked. But can you put that on, make sure that's on the next agenda? Because I do think it's important. I am concerned that, you know, we're, the board is being, is, the constituent is stating the board's not responding and then learning that the responses are coming from you and CFO Wallace, which is appropriate if that's what we've designated. The board's not aware of what you've responded. And so if you could just bring us up to speed on that.
Yeah. We are supposed to name the constituents as we talked about it in the public session as we got, learned in our training with ISBA. So we did receive an email from Michael Fox concerned about, and you directed us and CFO Wallace and I talked to you, we were meeting with the city about the comprehensive plan. We were involved in the comprehensive plan two years ago. We met with the city yesterday and we can, their, the city planner is, they're going to have a new planning and zoning director, which will be in place in the next couple of weeks. So we're going to be meeting with them when they have the new person, new person is leaving. And we, but the city administrator is willing to come do a presentation for the board. But it was inaccurate, as I said in my email to the board. We did respond to every single thing. It looks as if some pieces were pulled out. And so the city is following up with that piece, but we've responded to every single response. And we were part of the development of this school section of the comprehensive plan for the city of Raffin.
Okay.
She showed us when we met with us this week.
Okay. And, and that's great. But as I had stated to you and CFO Wallace, the board doesn't know anything about this. We don't know what's been said. We don't know what position the district's taken because we haven't directed the district to take any type of a position, but the district's taking position. So we should be kept up to date on, on what's going out and whatnot.
Yeah.
And then.
You just, you just talked to us a couple of days ago, so we certainly will continue to do, to do that from now forward.
Okay. And then coming to what Dr. Meyer said, the constituent I spoke with was Craig Wertz. And I had a great conversation. I'm really glad that he reached out to talk to me. It, it was a very fruitful discussion and I, I took what he said to heart. I mean, we should have a strategic plan. I mean, we should have a strategic plan in place for this board. And we do need to consider how we're going to navigate the growth and assure the parents that the growth with all of the powers that we may or may not have, isn't going to impact in a negative way the way their children are being educated. So I I I took what he had to say to heart and I just wanted to express that to the board. Okay.
I think if I can add to that, you know, it might not all be under a nice packaged umbrella of strategic plan.
Okay.
However, to trustee Aaron's statement, there was a long range facilities planning committee that had ten year, and you know, maybe we need to package under a, under a heading so constituents can find it.
Right.
There is the sit plan or combined district plan.
Right.
There is, you know, so the elements of this strategic plan they're looking for exist. CFO Wallace just brought to us the thing I had asked about as far as building capacity, functional capacity and where we are. So I think maybe the the pieces are there, the puzzle, but they haven't been packaged under a strategic plan. And the other thing is, is that Lakeland School District is a joint school district which also includes the southern part of Bonner County.
Correct.
And extends far beyond Rathram.
Correct.
So there's more to the district than just this little hub where we keep asking to be involved. But I I do think that there, that the district, you know, and and it is something that we constantly, you know, bits and pieces are talked about here and there, but you know, maybe we need to put all those pieces under an umbrella and say, here it is, and then fill in the gap.
Okay.
But I do think that there are some, some things there.
Board Chair Thompson?
Yes.
To trustee Brison's point, I, hour four again, I don't think trustee Bane has seen that and I'll forward again, it has a plethora of information that they took several, two years of work of the committee and last meeting, this board said, let's not forget the work that they've done, let's at least review it and then maybe move forward. So I feel like what I heard trustee Brison say is taking what we've done, reviewing that, getting new constituents that want to participate in this as we move, as the board plans moving forward. So I'll forward that again to the board so that all that information that trustee Brison referenced is all together because it really is very comprehensive.
Okay. Perfect. Curious. We did receive an email, it was a corporate email to everyone regarding, I'm looking for it and I can't find it, someone that's in Bonner County, just, oh, my new subdivision, there it is. She's on the outskirts of Spirit Lake and it looks like she's going through the proper channels. But she wanted to know her thoughts and what else she should do to try and get her, she's a new landowner in a new subdivision on the outskirts of Spirit Lake. And she wanted to know geographically, it's closer to go to Apple than to spend forty five minutes on the bus going up into Bonner County. So we haven't responded, well, I haven't responded anything to her. So I, and this constituent was Lindsay Healy or Heil?
Was anybody on the district staff, CC, Chrissy, myself, anybody besides the back four trustees?
No.
No.
I do not see.
So if someone could forward that to us.
Okay.
We have, as you know, we have a lot of families that are right across the border. And about three years ago, we grandfathered in, but we have not taken any new, we can't, our facilities at Apple and Spirit Lake cannot. We have a huge list of people that have applied because it is closer to come to our school district, but we have not accepted those new applications, we only grandfathered the ones that were there.
Okay.
We can, I can certainly reach out, Chrissy and I can track out to the decision and let them know.
Okay.
That's such a great question. And Natalie from, oh, from the State Department of Education.
Okay.
Sharon Thompson, I wonder if there's two parts to that, I mean, she probably or may have sent an open enrollment form, but there's also that do you think the channel she's talking about is an annization process?
Yes, that is what she's.
So she'd have to follow the statute and part of that is bringing her petition to the board, so she would have to officially do that.
As the board members, the group that came here that had already sent it in, the Westwater County School Board denied them, but they still took, set it down to the state. So the state is still in process of deciding whether to, or not, it's still not.
Going forward, I would like to talk about when the board book is presented to the public, they don't have the ability to see the same links that we do. So I'd like to put it on the agenda. A lot of them don't, I mean, I understand that there's some links that are not there, but I think that rather than trying to ask people to go file records requests and all that, it'd be nice to provide those.
Everything with the exception of personnel.
Sure.
Is available to public. So if I were to go.
I don't log in, I don't, I don't see it there, but.
Yeah, when I'm on, when I'm not on this system and I log in as a, off of our website as public, you know, just looking at meetings, I I cannot view any attachments at all.
Yeah, I can't either.
So, and I'm just pulling up tonight's, but I'm looking at it as a public person and every single thing is available.
No, I mean, previous meetings.
Oh, yeah, so that would be a matter of, and when board book changed over, I don't know when it was, a year ago, it was different how we gave permissions to it and it always defaulted to the public unless we changed it now, when they switched over to the new software, it's not like that. So it is a matter of me going back individually to every agenda item and making the appropriate ones public, which I can slowly do.
I see, well, and I'm just, I'm not wanting to discuss it now because it's not on the agenda, so that's certainly not what I'm intending to do. I'm just asking maybe we be able to discuss that going forward, I mean, I certainly don't want to add more, more work to do. Did you have more, trustee Thompson, I don't want to interrupt you, you go ahead.
Oh, no, you're good. We're.
I do have more, but I'll let you.
No, you're good, no, I just sent them the email.
Right.
That's all.
I want to talk about going forward, possibly, I know that there's a, we have a policy for the student accounts where our policy states that we have to have two signatures and we have to write personal, like a check for the funds, and I would like to just put it as an item to discuss next time that maybe if we could see those, if we could see the checks and see the the double signatures for all of the accounts that have been paid out in one month. So I'd just like to explore that a little further and and talk about that in an upcoming meeting. And I too have spoken to a patron named Heather Erickson who suggested that the communication that we have on the board is very poor and that the patrons aren't getting the full idea behind decisions that are being made. And this also might kind of correspond with what you were talking about where we need a vision statement and a and a purpose. I would like to entertain a discussion going forward about maybe having a parliamentarian to come in and help us and help us to figure out how to better conduct our board meetings in a way that will communicate to the public what they need to hear.
Okay.
And then, let's see. I had. Oh, I had another one as well. In our executive session, we were given a, an agreement, we were talking about the crisis plan, obviously, that was stated there and an agreement was brought to us that needed to be discussed in a public meeting and there was a couple of discussions regarding that agreement that needed to happen in a public meeting, so I just thought that that would be great to get that cured right now and talk about that. No decisions were made, no resolutions or anything were came to, but that that was something that occurred and I figured that that's great to just bring that out in the open and and I think this parliament, this parliamentarian that would come would also help us to kind of work through some of those issues on how to respond to things and and things like that.
Okay.
Just thought that that would be a good thing to bring out in the open right now.
I agree.
That was all I had.
So that being said, clerk, should I address what was brought to us for conversation that was had in executive session that should have not been brought, but brought in open meeting?
Yeah, you can absolutely do that and I think it would be good to clarify, an agreement was not brought to the board.
Correct.
It was discussed.
Correct. During executive session, Assistant Superintendent Lisa Sexton mentioned to the board that the Rathram City Council has approved the MOU that was presented to them which had been created for the Cooney County Sheriff's Department. Ms. Sexton did mention that they corrected one issue, so there was conversa, and the the issue they corrected was on the Cooney County MOU, it states that either party can can terminate, can terminate the contract at will and there's no hard feelings on either side and there's no financial obligation should you choose, should we or the sheriff's department choose to terminate the agreement. Rathram, city of Rathram does not like that language and is wanting to modify the language to state that neither, if the two parties are come to an agreement, then they can terminate the contract. However, if that doesn't happen, then we have to give a year's notice. So the discussion that was had in executive session was specific to what is that year term? Is it a twelve calendar months? So we, so we started talking about that and then realized that oops, we're in executive session, it should have never been brought to us at that point. It should have been brought in open session, so that was what was said and when we realized that we had sort of segued off into discussing the MOU, we terminated the conversation and we will bring that conversation back into open meeting. Okay.
So I'd like that on the next.
Yes, yeah, next agenda will have the Rathram MOU. Anything else for future agenda items? Board member input for future agenda items?
No?
No.
Trustee Brison?
Yes, I do have one, I just lost my spot. So there is, and it's actually federal and state law, statute in the fed state. We celebrate, some people refer to it as Constitution Day or Constitution Week, it's actually supposed to be a week long. Teaching or education, you know, to familiarize the the students and remind them of citizenship and the constitution and all of these things that have to do with the founding. And I would like to know how the, how the district is doing that, how we're meeting that.
Okay.
And what we're actually doing, so maybe we can bring that, so that's the week is September seventeenth. And maybe we can get some input on that and how we're we're meeting that requirement.
Okay.
Board Chair Thompson, can I clarify? Would you that on September seventeenth, so are you saying like the next board meeting on September twenty third, you want to hear how the classroom teachers participated that day, if there's others who have participated in that? Or are you saying that you want, on the September ninth, you want to have an agenda to? Which one are you saying?
Yeah, September ninth, just an overview of here's what we do, here's, here's how we do this kind of thing.
Okay. With that being said, I will, well, it should be noted that in executive session at four o'clock, we did address the items that are identified for executive session after this meeting. So instead of entering back into executive session, we are going to take action on the items that were discussed in executive session at four o'clock. So all I need to say, Chrissy? Okay, that being said, I will entertain a motion or motions regarding the action items after executive session.
I'll make a motion to approve the one year leave of absence request for certified employee zero eight, one, two, two, zero, two, one. I?
Yes.
Yes.
I second that motion.
Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Any other motions?
That we approve into requests from certified employees zero eight, two, six, twenty, twenty one J to be released from their twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two contract.
I'll second the motion.
Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Any other motions?
I'll move to approve the alternate authorization for certified employee zero eight, two, six, two, zero, two, one K.
I'll second the motion.
Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. And that concludes tonight's meeting.